Welcome to the Oshkosh Council, November 26. Pam, can you please call the roll?
Mugrower.
Here.
Crowsey.
Here.
Peschall.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Carried seven.
Councilmember Mugrower will lead us in the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Edward Lee from Lakeside Elementary and Ezekiel Lee from South Park Middle School.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Edward Lee. I'm going to give you your certificates here. Which one is Edward?
You are.
Well, thank you so much for helping us tonight. Here's your certificate. You must be Ezekiel. Thank you Ezekiel. You can stay and watch the council meeting or go home and work on homework. Thank you so much.
Next, we have the first opportunity for citizen statements to council.
Pam, do we have anyone registered?
Yes, we have a couple individuals. Tony Palmieri, 212 West Parkway Avenue.
Thank you very much. Oshkosh lost a great citizen recently. Charlotte Guyer was the mother of Mayor Palmieri and of course, my mother-in-law. And I just want to take some time to honor her memory by publicly thanking three city departments that made a real major impact in her life over the last 10 years. Just as a backdrop, Charlotte Guyer spent many years in El Paso, Texas. And in 2010, she survived a stroke that left her partially paralyzed and in need of wheelchair access for the rest of her life. She moved to Oshkosh to be closer with family. She always preferred the Southwest, but came to love Oshkosh, in part because of some of the spectacular humane treatment that she received from city services. And I just want to give three examples. She lived across the street from Menominee Park in Bella Vista. And in the spring and summer, Menominee Park, the only joy she got more than from being in that park was being with the grandkids and great-grandchildren. She was a photographer. Photographer took thousands of photos in the shoreline restoration area, in the zoo, had many interactions with park employees who were always so respectful and so decent. And she always had her motorized chair. And it was just a wonderful place for her to be and so tremendously enhanced her quality life. So I just want to thank the Parks Department for making that park especially, but all of our parks, just such a wonderful place for all people, including of course, people with disabilities. Secondly, our Transit Department. Mayor Palmieri taught her mom how to use the bus system here. And Charlotte Guyer, so many times over the last 10 years, got on the city buses and was treated with such kindness and such respect by the bus drivers. So many times in the last 10 years, she told me how wonderful the city bus drivers were. And she so greatly enjoyed her interaction with them. We had a wonderful time this past summer taking mom to EAA. And we rode out there on the city bus, a packed bus, and watching the city bus drivers and their professionalism and their kindness was just tremendous and really inspiring. So I want to thank the Transit Department. And third, the Fire Department, especially Emergency Medical Services. Given her disability, mom had some major falls over the last 10 years, requiring emergency medical to come and literally pick her up. And they were always so compassionate and so decent and so humane. And it just did so much for our family to know that this is the quality of personnel that we have in the city that are taking care of our loved ones. In Charlotte Guyer's last week of life, we moved her from Aurora Hospital back to her home to be with hospice care. And we were there watching the medical services move her back to her residence. And it was just one of the most just inspiring and thoughtful and professional things I've ever seen. And you know, it's become so commonplace over the last 10 years to either minimize or even in some cases denigrate what public employees and city employees do for people. But I know I can speak for the mayor in saying that when it comes to Charlotte Guyer, her mom, my mother-in-law, and our family, city services and city employees have made a major positive difference. And I know especially in this time of year, tax time, when you're hearing a lot about taxes, we know from our family's experience that our tax dollars do go to pay for some services that make a real tremendous difference for families. And so in honor of my mother-in-law, Charlotte Guyer, I want to, you know, thank not just those three departments, but really all the departments in the city that go out of their way to make lives better for us all. So thank you all very much and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else registered?
Yes, I do. Steve Barney, 1335 Summit Avenue.
I'm glad that I didn't have too many, too long to wait because I needed to catch a bus right afterward. Thanks for the good word. I'm here to remind you of climate change because Greta Thunberg is calling for another global protest against climate inaction on the day after Thanksgiving. So I just want to remind you that I'm actually pretty happy with what's happened since the last time I was here. The Sustainability Board is, it looks like the Sustainability Board is really looking into this and they've been in contact with the governor's people and so forth. I don't know if you listen to Wisconsin Public Radio, but this morning, they had a news report about climate change. Because the United Nations Environment Program just published a report today, I think it's called "On the Brink." And I took a look at a 60-second video on that page and you just have to see it to believe it. And it's coming from, the thing is that it's coming from credible sources. It's not coming from an idiot like me, okay? It's coming from people who really know what they're talking about, who have credentials, who have credibility and scientific background, et cetera. If you go to unenvironment.org, you'll see this report and that video. And I just want to, in homage to Greta Thunberg, the 16-year-old Swedish activist who's now world famous for standing up against climate inaction, I want to read a short passage from one of her speeches. "Since the climate crisis is a crisis that never once has been treated as a crisis, people are simply not aware of the full consequences from our everyday life. People are not aware that there is such a thing as a carbon budget, that there is such a thing as a..." People are not aware that there is such a thing as a carbon budget and just how incredibly small that remaining carbon budget is. And that needs to change today. So perhaps you could do me a favor, and Greta, and you know, young people especially, because they are, will be inordinately affected by what we do now. And just search for the phrase, the term "carbon budget." Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have anyone else registered, Pam?
No, we do not.
Next, we have consent agenda items. Do we have anyone registered for consent agenda?
No, we do not.
Take motion and a second on consent.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Peschall.
Sure. I guess I would like to, I can't remember the term, but I want to remove Resolution 19-589 for a separate vote. What's the terminology?
Poll.
Poll, thank you. It's my first one since I've been back on.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'd just like to have the clerk under Resolution 19-596, kind of, we go over the reasons why we're moving the polling district and why we're pulling it out of the district of where the citizens that are voting are going to be voting and where are they going to be voting at and the reasons behind it. We all got, I'm sure all council members saw the email that we received from County Board Member Wingren, concerned about the fact that all the people in that district are going to be voting in their district. So she just wanted to give us a little update of where we're at. I know the school district has a lot to do with this.
Yes, it does. If you recall, back in 2017, we moved four polling sites out of the schools and we relocated those. It was a very positive experience. The only one remaining was Webster Stanley, and now they have really requested us to move out of the gym. It's interesting because our times have changed. I'm trying to bring strangers into the building and they're trying to keep strangers out. And that gym, it really is disruptive to their daily activities of the kids doing the gym classes and their meals, they serve breakfast and they serve lunch in that area. So it's disruptive to that. So I did go and I looked at various sites within the district. When I look at sites, I look for space, accessibility, parking, and security of the election. There were several sites that I looked at that I just didn't feel they met that requirement. So I started looking outside the district. And the library came into play and we went and we toured it. I feel it's a good fit. I think it will be a positive experience for the voters when they go to that location. We will do our due diligence like we did with the previous move. We will inform the voters, try to make it as smooth as possible for that transition.
Okay. Here's one other concern I have is that it's, you know, 1.36 miles from Webster Stanley. And you know, I live in that district and it's elderly district and yet it's a high-populated turnout for voting. So I'm hoping that if we approve it, that they will continue to get out and vote, which is very important. And there are some other issues. I know that it could change after the 2020 census and we readjust and all that. Do we have any other polling sites or outside of their voting district or was this the first time since we've been moving places?
In my time with the city, this is the first time that we've gone outside the district. I really do try to stay within our district, but because of the circumstances, I had to go outside the district. And this particular district, they do have a phenomenal turnout. And the elderly, they do have the opportunity that they could vote by absentee ballot also.
Correct.
Yeah. And you know, Webster Stanley has been great with us over the years, has a great partnership.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. So councilmember Peschall asked to pull 589. So we would...
589.
I'm sorry, 589. Did you want to pull it for discussion or did you want it removed?
I wanted, I wanted it to remove for a separate vote.
Okay. All right. So we'll need a motion and a second on the consent agenda, minus 589.
Nope.
We have it. We're good.
Okay.
All right. Take the vote? Yes? Okay. Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, then we'll go on for discussion.
Oh, you have to move.
Move, motion and a second on 589 then.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Peschall.
Sure. Give me a second here, I need to get back to where... So I guess my concern comes back to, is this, this is related, a settlement related to the dark store issue that exists around the state?
Somewhat.
Okay.
We had an appraisal done. There was a comparable that was not a dark store comparable, but Walmart's appraisals used dark store comparables. So there was that, some of that in there. I also don't know, we looked at some of the other cities around us and their prices per square foot, and I don't know whether those had been lowered or, you know, in prior years on the dark store method or not.
Even though it's not the dark store method, the dark store is distinct from the Walgreens case, and I think the Walgreens-Create case is probably a closer analogy to this one, wouldn't you think so Lynn? In terms of, we're basically following what's been happening as a result of the Walgreens decision that's still cascading throughout communities.
There's a lot of things at play in this one. I'm just going to be honest, there were, we had the assessor's assessment, we hired an expert to review that. Walmart had an appraisal done, we looked at what they had done, we looked at what other cities and municipalities around us and how they were valuing the properties. So to just say it's a dark store is just a little bit too simplistic for this property. But in all likelihood, yes, it did play into it.
So in essence, this is, this is the, kind of the path that's taken by larger corporations to contest their tax bill into getting a lower assessment so that they pay lower taxes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, which is very much a tool that's afforded to the entities and organizations that can afford to fight such tax bills and to be part of that process, correct?
Yes.
Would you assume as much? Yes. So, and I guess where I'm going with this is that, you know, those entities that have that ability to be able to afford the corporate lawyers, to be able to do this work, have the ability to end up contesting that process, paying less but still paying a good majority. But I think in the end, you know, this comes back to is the taxpayers end up paying this, correct? This is money that's been set aside in the budget for us to pay if there were settlements of this sort.
Again, in this case, we did look at it and the assessor looked at it as well as our expert, and we thought we were high as well.
Okay.
So it's not just that they threatened to sue us or were in litigation with us.
But they did.
We did a very thorough evaluation of it and we thought we were high as well.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's kind of what I'm looking for, is that, is that staff feels that this is inappropriate payout. I mean, it's a nominal payout compared to what it could be. But I still want to, you know, make the point is that, you know, this is, this is really one of those instances where a large corporation has worked that process and has come back with a lower, the lower bill of which we end up having to pay for. Correct? We're settling with them at this amount of 141, correct?
Correct. I don't...
Yeah. So, so that's money that was set aside to pay that settlement. We've, taxpayer, is this, let's put this a different way. Is this money that's been set aside, that's been rolled over? Has this been money that was taxed for? Is this part of our levy of how this is being paid?
Well, for 2017 and 2018, they would have paid the taxes. And so that, that money went into the 2017 or 2018 budgets and, you know, has been spent. It will, the cities will end up refunding our portion, we will do a chargeback for the other taxing jurisdictions. 2019, because of our timing, we were just slightly too late to be able to catch it for the tax bill. So they'll end up getting a, as soon as they pay it, they will get a refund. And I'm not sure exactly how you're handling that in terms of the budget, but...
It'll still show up.
Mr. Van Goghple.
Thank you. As far as the 2019 bill, they'll have to pay the bill and then get a request refund and we'll issue a refund. And then we'll go through the chargeback process.
I think where Bob was going with this is, is this budgeted, I think, is, where's the money, where's the chargeback coming from? Where's it, is it coming from the general fund? Is it?
Yeah, we account for all of our tax collections in kind of a separate agency fund. And so we've already done the settlement and collection, so we'll have to, you know, front the money to pay it, but we'll charge back the other taxing entities for their share.
We have an account every year, but in the last few years, that number's been going up because of the payments that have been going on. But we have to budget more for that. So it comes in through that account that Russ mentioned, but then it has to go out through. From an accounting standpoint, we have to demonstrate that we've paid these things out. So they end up being expenditure on, as you see it in the budget.
Any other discussion? All right. Can we please take the roll?
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have pending ordinances, Ordinance 19-606. Do we have anyone registered?
No one is registered.
This is approved zone change from Institutional District to Institutional Plan Development IPD District at 1745 Oregon Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Motion and a second on 19-606.
So moved.
Discussion. Discussion. Councilmember Peschall.
Nothing. I'm going to hold my comments.
All right. Please take the roll.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have ordinance 19-607. Do we have anyone registered to speak on 19-607?
No one is registered.
This is another zone change, approved zone change from Institutional District to Institutional Plan Development District at 619 Merritt Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Anyone registered?
No.
Motion and a second on 607.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Please call the roll.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have two, or I'm sorry, three new ordinances. The first one, we will vote on the other, there are four. The first one, we will not take action. Let's do this one at a time. We will take action on Ordinance 19-608, canceled December 24th council meeting, staff recommends waiving the rules and adopting on first reading. Anyone registered to speak on that?
No one is registered.
Motion and a second on waiving the rules and adopting on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Please take the roll.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Carried seven.
And discussion on, or I'm sorry, motion and a second on canceling the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right. The next three new ordinances, we will take no action on. Ordinance 19-609, update parking regulations on Eagle Street and Marion Road. Traffic and Parking Advisory Board recommends approval. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
All right. And 19-610, designate the intersection of West 10th Avenue and Minnesota Street as a two-way stop. Minnesota stops for West 10th Avenue. Currently a yield. Traffic and Parking Advisory Board recommends approval. Is there anyone registered to speak on this one?
No one is registered.
And 19-611, repeal and replace, replacement of Chapter 13, fire prevention. Is anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered for that one.
Ms. Rollup, should we have Chief Stanley come and just kind of give a brief overview of what this is or would you like to summarize that?
I think I would rather have Chief Stanley explain some of the details.
All right.
But I'm sure he'll do a great job. I'm giving you time so he can do the walk-up, so.
Don't put a lot of pressure on me saying I do a great job. So as indicated in the memo that we briefed you with, that we're trying to update our fire prevention ordinances to reflect NFA, National Fire Protection Association standards and changes within the International Fire Code that you adopted as a council, to allow us to protect the community, make sure that we are doing our due diligence around fire prevention. So some of the highlights will be that, excuse me, that we are looking at utilizing a, having the ability to utilize a third-party vendor to perform the record management system function. So should we have to come back and look at, were fire protection systems tested? Were they maintained? Have they been repaired? That we can more accurately look at that data, look at those records to make sure that those things are being accomplished. Also, put us more in compliance with what some of the other surrounding areas are doing with outdoor burning, fire pits, recreational burning, you know, to make sure that we're not posing any fire hazards by people having fires or some type of open burning in their backyards. Like I said, also it addresses some of the Knox box or lockbox issues that when we get called to a building, you know, for a fire alarm or some type of incident, if there's not somebody there after hours to allow us access with keys, we might have to do a lot of damage to doors or windows to gain that access. So by having that lockbox there that we can access and the fire department has a key to that, we can enter into that building without doing any damage. So it will require the installation and maintenance of those as well. So a lot of it is just a cleanup of the ordinances to make sure that we're in line with best practice.
I might understand this is also related to, or there's an element in there about fire pits in the city or fire using...
Correct.
Fire permits.
Yeah, that, one of the frequent calls we get is for notification that somebody is doing outdoor burning. Right now, there is no discerning factors of whether that's just a bonfire or whether that's an approved fire code rated commercial fire pit, you know, or a chimnea or things of that nature. And so that will allow us to regulate and enforce that if someone decides that they're going to burn tires and pallets in their driveway, that's not acceptable. You know, if you're in your backyard, there's division between neighbors, there is a manufactured or commercially-made fire pit, you have a method of extinguishment like a fire extinguisher or a garden hose present, you know, those are within those acceptable limits. Also allows for the unlikely event in this area, but you know, should we have some burning restrictions and some concerns about open burning causing wildfires, it gives us the ability to restrict or ban those during those high-threat areas or those high-threat times. Excuse me.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, just for the people at home, we're not, we're not messing with anybody's fire pit that's approved. We're not, we're not whacking any fire pits or anything like that, right?
No, what we are doing with this ordinance change would allow us to create a permitting process, you know, that we're still working on that and we'll likely do that through resolution change that we would bring before council if we decide to go that direction, opens that option for us. Because, so we want to make sure that those, those are permissible fires, exactly what you're talking about, Councilmember Miller, of if, you know, you... Exactly what you're talking about, Councilmember Miller, of if, you know, you have things that are within the acceptable parameters that are established by the fire code we've adopted, you still can do that. Many times we get called because somebody sees smoke or they're, it's maybe a neighbor dispute that we can say this is permitted, this is within the guidelines, this is approved. Allows for us to have some oversight and some ability to allow that.
Right. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Chief Stanley? All right. You're good. Thanks. Next we have resolution nineteen six one two. I'm sorry.
Oh, nothing.
No, we're not voting on that. No action on that. Okay. Nineteen six one two, approve great neighborhoods capital improvement programs funding for Millers Bay Sign Design in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
Oh, certainly.
I'm Charles Williams. I'm a, on the Millers Bay Neighborhood Streetscape Committee.
Could we just have your address, Mr. Williams?
Fourteen sixteen Menominee Drive.
Thank you.
The Millers Bay neighborhood is located on Menominee Drive with the northern boundary Murdoch Avenue. Hazel is the western boundary and the Washington Triangle is the eastern boundary. In twenty seventeen, we had a master plan that called for designing certain features in the neighborhood to identify the park and the neighborhood. There is an introduction to the neighborhood. It was built in the fifties and sixties. It's a mid-century neighborhood. There are six hundred and forty-eight residents living there, two hundred and ninety-eight households, and the average family size is two point seven six people. But we're trying to do some signage and part of the design included, if you can see anything on that, I'm not sure.
Here we go. There we go.
But I also have it in color somewhere. But we would urge you to please approve this resolution. Part of the design we're trying to make will allow for different locations potentially. The current location we're trying to work on is the intersection of Menominee Drive and Nevada, which is where the pump house is on the strip of Millers Bay. And several plans in mind, but approving these designs will allow us to kind of move, have different signage in different locations, including over perhaps the Washington Triangle, the corner of Murdoch and Hazel and the Nevada intersection. We're also trying to implement some traffic calming ideas to slow down the traffic. Menominee Drive can sometimes become a racetrack. And we hope that implementing some features that'll improve the pedestrian safety is also a good idea, especially around M Line Cook School and on Menominee Drive, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. So is that, besides a sign, is that knee-well also designed to be a bench? Is that what that looks like?
There's different alternatives. This is an example of a bench that could be even at a bus stop. I understand the design phase, the architects are the same company that did the original neighborhood streetscape vision plan. That's what this is from. That was done in October of twenty seventeen. And M Line Cook School has a limestone base. There are a lot of limestone features in the homes around Menominee Drive. And again, they're built primarily in the nineteen fifties, which is the mid-century. But there's different options that are suggested here. We're hoping that whatever is designed will allow the city to be able to move forward with bidding process and whatever they want to do to do some of the signage. And I've got more pictures and I can hand this out if you want to look at this. Here's some of the homes in the neighborhood. One of my favorites is this one. I grew up in it. I am the, one of the two people, I think, who lives in their family home on Menominee Drive. Or kids that were in that generation. My parents built the house in nineteen fifty-five.
So Charlie, you never moved out, is what you're telling me. You're one of, so you've been living in the basement for how many years?
We call it lower left. But, no, it's a great neighborhood. It's fabulous and I think it's, you know, it's one of the finest features we've got of the many fine features in this city, but Menominee Park is, you know, it was very great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind, can you register with Lieutenant right behind you? So he's got all your info for us. If you wouldn't mind registering with him.
All right. Do we have anyone else? We didn't have anyone registered. All right. Thank you, Mr. Williams. So we'll need a motion and a second on nineteen six one two.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All right. Please call the roll.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pashal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next we have resolution nineteen six one three, approve twenty twenty across-the-board market increase for nonrepresented employees. Do we have anyone registered on this?
No one is registered.
All right. Back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All right. Please call the roll.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pashal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next we have the nineteen six one four, adopt debt management policy. Long Range Finance Committee recommends approval. Do we have anyone registered on this?
No one is registered.
All right. Back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Mugrower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I see Mr. Van Gompel's walking up here. I was gonna invite him up just to give us a brief synopsis of this one. We took this up on long-range finance over the last couple of months and have talked about some of the inner workings of some of our policies. And this was one of the positive changes that Mr. Van Gompel's brought to us to consider in terms of some of our debt management, as well as our cash management and some of the budget implications of it. So I think with that, I'll hand it over.
Thank you. Just wanted to cover a couple of quick things. Really, if you look at the memorandum, there's basically four measurements in the past. The city kind of looked at the measurement of the maximum amount of indebtedness that you wish to issue and have on the books. And we've been running about sixty percent of the state limit. The state limits municipalities and cities and local governments to five percent of the equalized value. So the policy that's being recommended to the city council from the long-range finance would state that we have a maximum of seventy percent of the state-allowed debt, with our goal in the next ten years to get it under fifty percent. Fifty percent is kind of a good margin to look at. Again, we're running at about sixty percent right now. We've had some growth in our equalized value, so that'll look at that ratio, but we're also retiring debt as we move forward. So that's a good thing. We're trying to retire the debt as much as possible. We also added three new measurement tools, kind of key performance indicators as far as debt goes. One of them is the amount of the net debt should not exceed three times the operating revenue. If we look at the twenty twenty budget, we're less than one times our operating revenues. So we're at about point eight six percent. So we're well below that threshold. Again, that's kind of an industry standard. The one that received some attention, the third component at budget time was the amount of our tax levy that goes towards debt. We're currently running at about just under thirty percent. The committee had some discussion about how high we wanted to go. You know, usually you want to stay at that twenty-five percent ratio, but we're running close to thirty. The committee felt pretty confident in recommending thirty-three percent as a max. We'd like to see that lower. I'd like to see that lower. But as far as a policy statement was before you tonight, would set that ratio at thirty-three percent. And then the last thing that kind of looks at how fast you're turning your debt over. The industry standard is that sixty-five percent or more of your debt is retired within ten years. I'm pleased to report that our debt is actually quicker than that. About eighty-four percent of our debt is being retired in the next ten years. So if you're looking at management of the debt, this policy will help, especially when we go to Moody's for ratings. Each debt issue goes through a rating process. Having this policy adopted by city council will help us with that rating process and hopefully assist in maintaining our credit rating or even improving on it. It's getting harder and harder with the state environment to actually get an improvement in your rating agencies, but we don't want it to see get any worse. So we're actually recommending to the city council to adopt the policy and help send the message that we're, you know, being proactive in establishing good, sound practices in managing our debt and then managing the city as a whole.
Just a quick question, Mr. Van Gompel, then. Are those two items, the debt levy amount and the debt amortization, the aggressive or shorter turnaround on that amortization, how will those impact each other? Can they be in conflict? Can you explain for the public how that might?
Yeah, they definitely can be in conflict because, you know, in order to retire the debt, you have to levy tax levies to do that. So you have that struggle. And I think that's one of the reasons why the city is struggling with how much is getting shifted of the levies, getting shifted towards debt retirement. But, you know, you want to strike that balance. We've been pretty constant at the thirty percent. We've probably been there the last three, four years. So, you know, that number is pretty good, but it's kind of been inching up a little bit. But at the same time, we're trying to reduce our amount of indebtedness. And so there are conflicts with that as we move forward. But one of the things I think it's important when you look at any type of borrowing issue is, you know, what's the life of the asset? And you want to try to match that up. You definitely don't want to have debt out longer than the life of the assets. And that comes into play when we start looking at street projects and utility improvements. So there is always a challenge and a give and take to do that. But I think some of the parameters the industry has kind of adopted, you know, hopefully puts some of those checks and balances in place.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Russ, first of all, before I get to my question for you, which is gonna be, I don't want you to answer it right away because I'm gonna give you a minute to think about it. But I want for the people at home to understand what our debt structure looked, debt looked like as a percentage twelve or thirteen years ago. But one thing I really, the exciting thing for me, being the new council member here, is this long-range finance committee. I think these folks are hitting it out of the park. I mean, what's going on there and their recommendations to us is unbelievable. And for everybody that doesn't understand the way we're grappling with our debt here, nothing to do with me, but all previous long-range finance committee members and previous councils, so lead into what our debt looks like, say, twelve years ago, where it is now.
Yeah. The city is really, and most municipalities now are looking at debt as a financing tool because of some of the limitations put onto local governments from the state of Wisconsin. And for the city of Oshkosh, they were running seventy percent and higher. And so some of that was stagnant growth on the equalized value. So we've seen some increases in the equalized value, which is healthy for the city. And you also have to manage the amount of indebtedness. And we're taking more off the books and we're putting on the books, so that's a good thing. The long-range finance and in working with them, there's a whole number of policies that I'd like to, you know, eventually get into as far as fiscal management of the city. And we've talked about the list that they, the committee has and some of the maybe potential options for other policies to be looked at. So this is the first one, and I think it's very important, looking at our financial picture and what makes sense for the city. So the city is moving in the right direction. We want to keep moving in the right direction. But yeah, we also want to have some structure and laying out some goals of what we want to get to.
Great job. Seriously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Can we please take the roll on nineteen six one four?
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pashal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next we have resolution nineteen six one five, approve specific implementation plan for an adaptive reuse of a former school to a senior living apartment. Six one nine Merritt Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
All right. Back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Pashal.
Come on up.
You beat me to it.
All right.
Mr. Lyons.
So do you want to give a quick overview? Because you might answer my questions that I have if you're provided the opportunity to speak.
Sure, I gave a quick overview of the project. This is the former Cabrini School site. Advocate approached us with potential redevelopment of the building from the vacant school to a senior living apartment complex. Being institutionally zoned and having kind of an integrated site with the existing church, we needed to rezone the property to a planned development and issue some basic modifications and setback issues to be able to fully redevelop this site. And includes redevelopment of the existing school building, as well as the construction of some garages on the southern portion of the site and the kind of relocation of the existing garage building used for the school.
So the question that I had is in the initial memo, and maybe this might just be a grammatical error. It talked about a proposed school, so, but didn't?
Yes. We mentioned proposed school. That was definitely an error. It was a former school.
Former school. Okay.
Now proposed senior living apartments.
Got it. Just wanted to make sure that we weren't adding another school to the area, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, but we got to figure out a way to make it work. So then, so then what is the total? Just trying to figure this out, because they're removing one structure, correct? One parking structure.
Correct. They're removing a small garage, essentially a maintenance garage.
Maintenance garage. Okay. And then, and then they're adding two additional garages. And those garages are to be used for what reasons?
Those are for parking for the residents of the senior living apartment.
Okay. So that means that's six, so that says sixteen and ten stalls. So that's going to be their inside parking.
Correct.
Essentially. Okay. And then, and then it looks like there's a total, there's a total of seventy lot, seventy stalls on the whole property that are gonna be used.
Code would require a total of seventy parking stalls.
Thirty-five.
Got it.
It's going, reducing down.
They're reducing it.
Got it.
The advocate has stated that what a type of senior living community this is, they don't see a parking ratio similar to what you would for a market rate, maybe family-oriented apartment complex. So they're asking to reduce the total number of required parking stalls down to the number that they're proposing to provide.
Okay. And that makes sense to me. I mean, that makes a lot of sense because that age group tends to drive less and tends to have the need for a vehicle. Most times they hold on to their vehicles out of the hindsight of hoping that someday they'll be able to have their freedom back a little bit more. So my, go ahead.
But Mr. Lyons, isn't there also a cross-agreement with the church for some additional?
Do you have a cross-access agreement that they can pick up some buses next door if needed? Being a new to. Being a new development, the applicant can largely help control their parking through their rentals.
Sure. Yep. Now, my one question is that, you know, the memo kind of also puts a little emphasis on that on-street parking, especially the angle on-street parking. And I know over the years, the city has moved away from doing on-street angle parking. And so, my question is, do we know when this is going to come up in the capital improvement plan down the line to redo these roads and?
I don't believe this is slated in the near future for reconstruction. Mr. Robbie is here. The thought on that is it's mainly for guest parking during the day if someone was coming to visit, if somebody's living there.
That street's been reconstructed within the last five or six years, so not for a long time.
Okay.
You're saying I'll be dead, James?
I'm not going to go that far.
So, James, what street are you referring to? Are you referring to Boyd or Monroe?
The one on the east side would be Boyd, was just recently reconstructed within the last five or six years. And that's where, I know there's angle parking on that one.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. And then my next question relates to the access to the site from the north. And I think what I read was that they're removing the driveway access on the north, which I would assume is Merritt?
No, driveway access to the east is being removed. Currently, there's two access points on the east, and they are going down to a single access point on the east. On the north, there's the one shared access point that will continue to remain for both the church and the redeveloped school.
Okay. So, my, my question is, why maintain that north, that north side entrance? I guess what's the, is there an accessible entrance right there that's related to the church in the building?
So, that entrance, the north and southern parking lots are not accessible via one another. You can't get from the northern portion of the site to the southern portion of the site.
Okay.
So, that northern access is for parking for the church. There's a parking lot there as well as kind of the drop-off common entrance into the assisted living facility. So, that access point in the north is to access the parking lot and then kind of that main entrance to the Cabrini School location.
All right. You just said something that's going to spur a question for me. You just called it an assisted living facility?
Excuse me, senior living facility.
Okay.
It is not assisted living.
Okay. It's much different, so thank you. Part of my, all my questions is that, as I was trying to build them, my iPad died on me, so, so excuse me. So, thank you.
And as I understand, Mr. Lyons, too, these are affordable senior living?
Correct.
Correct? Fifty-five plus?
That's our understanding as well.
Okay. Thirty-four, thirty-five units, right? Yeah?
Five units, correct.
I'm just really pleased to see the reduction in the impervious surface area as well. This is one of the few that we've seen come forward where it's being reduced.
Yeah, should be a significant improvement to the site with that reduced pavement.
Do you have any more?
I have just.
Okay, does anybody else have questions? All right. Councilmember Heschel.
That northern, northeastern corner?
Yes.
Is there, is that plan, is that going to have, is there any plan to change that area?
That is one of the areas that hard surface is being removed and converted to green space.
Okay. And then my next question is, there, it's maybe for Mr. Robbie. So, is related to the angle parking and such and, is there areas where the city prefers to maintain angle parking versus not wanting to maintain it in other areas?
Generally, as we're doing street reconstruction projects, that is going to be coordinated with the adjacent property owner because that additional width that it takes to install that angle parking is generally 100 percent special assessed to that adjacent property owner because it's strictly for their benefit.
So, what I think, what I think you're saying is that, is that those, that angle parking that exists there today is because that property owner wanted to pay for that?
I believe it existed prior to the project and they wanted to maintain it when we reconstructed Boyd. And as I said, Boyd was just redone, so I don't see anything being done on it for quite some time.
I just, I found that there were areas where there were barriers that exist in the community where entities didn't want to pay that extra amount to maintain it as angle parking versus straight in, straight out.
Yeah, that parallel parking versus the angle parking, it's usually the additional cost that triggers them to say, you know what, you can get rid of it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. If there's no further discussion, can we please take the roll?
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Heschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Period seven.
All right. Next, we have council discussion direction to city manager, future agenda items, future workshop.
Just the scheduled workshop for January 25th. It'll be a large group, so we'll have more of a class.
Twenty-eighth.
I'm sorry, twenty-eighth.
Yep, okay.
Excuse me, at 5:00 P.M. And it'll be here in room 404. So, we'll accommodate more of a classroom setting for all of the many boards and commissions and the council that we'll have there.
So far, we have Plan Commission, Redevelopment Authority, Rental Housing Council, and this is regarding the Impediment Spare Housing Plan and CDBG. That's the Community Development Block Grant 2020 through 2024 Consolidated Plan. So, again, that's January 28th at 5:00 P.M. And that plan is on the website and available for the public to view as well.
And even, and even though it's not here, the following day is the strategic planning retreat. We'll have that in future listings for future meetings.
Twenty-ninth.
That'll be the 29th, yeah.
All right. Councilmember Heschel.
Forgive me for asking, but is that, are all those documents for that hearing already finished?
I will wait for Mr. Davis to come and answer that question. I don't know if they're entirely ready yet. I think that's why we put it out.
Okay.
A few weeks with that.
Our current plans are on the internet, are on our website. We hired the consultant to update us, update those plans. And I think the drafts might be available for the earlier chapters, but we won't have the final version until we've actually had the meeting and then put that on the website as well.
So, the final draft comes after, after all of us meet, is what you're saying?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right. And those documents that are in draft form, those are going to be provided to us in advance of that meeting?
Yes.
Okay, do you have an idea of what the target time for that is?
No, I'd have to follow up with the consultant. I know they did quite a few interviews earlier this fall and they're compiling additional information. I haven't seen a draft of what they compiled at this point. But I'll make sure we get whatever we can to all the invited attendees.
All right, thank you.
Before the meeting.
And we'll put it in a newsletter to let you know when to expect it as well.
Okay. I'm assuming that it'll actually be posted to our website, though, for public viewing prior to that meeting also.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Next, small item here, child activity area at City Hall during board and commission meetings. That's me. I just wanted to have some thoughts, feedback from council members on having a small, little activity area, maybe table chairs, coloring, that kind of thing, unstaffed, but available to make City Hall family-friendly for those who have young children and would like to attend meetings for council or other boards and commissions in the break room area. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you. I guess I would ask the city attorney, I think we would need a legal opinion because if we're going to have on this type of activity, we're going to have an area of kids that are unsupervised in City Hall. What happens if one of the children gets hurt, gets sick, something happens because the parents aren't going to be with the child?
I mean, the parents would be with them?
This would be, the parents would be?
The kids would be in the board meeting with the parents?
So?
Or a parent would have to be with the children and the other parent of the two children would be at the meeting.
So, think of this like church where they have the crying room. So, let's say you're here, come to council tonight, you have young children, and you'd like to still watch in the break room with your young child if they're needing to be distracted. There's just a little child-friendly area so that they can still watch and come back or be next up to bat, if you will. So, it's not staffed by city staff, still supervised by parents, just making it family-friendly so that children can feel welcome with their parents to attend meetings. Do we need a legal opinion for that?
I don't think so, but.
Councilmember Heschel.
Sure. I, I think it's a great idea. I think, you know, I guess I picture you're talking about having like the TV in the break room would be on showing that committee meeting and then they'd be able to see when their time is up or to come, come up to the meeting to make a point or?
I mean, really, it's simply about putting a small kids' table and chairs and maybe some coloring books. Obviously, it's a, it's a public room available to anybody already. It just makes it a little more family-friendly.
I, I see no real concern with it. I think the only concern that I would have is also the same concern that Deputy Mayor Herman would have with making sure that, you know, the parents or a suitable adult or sibling would be there to, you know, to watch kids.
Yeah, it's not the tot lot at festival.
So.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, I'm just assuming the break room is open for anybody to use during these council meetings anyways. Is that, is that accurate? I mean, without, I just don't know any better.
We don't have any restrictions for the use. I mean, it's also the employee lunchroom. If we had, if there were board and commission meetings at noon, I would have some concerns about it. But generally, our meetings are after, you know, after 4:00 and things like that. So, there are a couple of boards and commissions, Committee on Aging, Stormwater, that's 7:30 in the morning, probably not a concern, so.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't see a problem with putting some grands and coloring books in there and just status quo. Is that, is that kind of where we're at? I mean, yeah, so, sure, why not?
Councilmember Crowsey.
Yeah, that's kind of how I interpreted it, as like a church crying room. Get some Legos in there, maybe a little table with some books just to preoccupy the kids if a parent has to take them in there. Obviously, I think it needs to be supervised by one of the parents if they have to take their kids in there because get three, four-year-olds by themselves, it's probably not appropriate. But if the parent needs a spot to go, that'd be excellent idea.
Well, and I promise, it's not a money grab by the city. It's not meant to boost the vending machine sales in there. Councilmember Heschel.
Just on a lighter note, I probably wouldn't call it the crying room, just so you guys know.
All right.
I like to see the kids in the audience. I don't care if they're crying.
All right. Next is the second option for citizen statements to council. Do we have anyone registered?
No one is registered.
And city manager announcements and statements.
Unless council has anything they want to, Mr.
Councilmember Heschel.
Thank you. Sure. I just wanted to make sure, we've been having a lot of discussions related to student transit lately, and I just want to, I want to make sure that we have opportunities to, as a council, to talk about that in general, whether it's open or if there's a need for a closed session to discuss the inner workings of that. I just want to make sure that that makes it on to our next agenda, either in some form of discussion or announcement or some type of meeting or best-case scenario, some type of agreement and improvement of such a program since we're close. So, but that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right.
Just.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Off Mr. Heschel's, I had sent an email, I prefer this to go in a closed session first before it comes to open discussion because it does impact the budget. Budget's been approved.
City Attorney Lawrenson, would that be appropriate for closed session?
It would be, I've had this discussion with the city attorney. A budget discussion is not appropriate for closed session, but negotiating with another entity would be one of those exceptions.
And that's what we're doing, so.
Yeah, and that's what we're doing. I just wanted to clarify because I think the city attorney off about the budget.
Right.
No budget.
No budget, but it had to do with the agreement with the school district and supposedly private partners, who we don't know who they are.
I think it'd be appropriate to have a discussion in closed session if council wanted it that way.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. I'll make this brief. I should have done this under new resolutions. But I did want to thank Matt Mugrower and the team on long-range finance as well as staff for their diligent work in regards to looking at our debt policy. We've talked about it before in budget. It's difficult when there's so much need in the city to remain disciplined. But at the end of the day, it's, it's the best thing moving forward for future committees, future council members, future city managers and staff. So, thank you to everyone that was involved. Do appreciate it.
Okay. City manager, would you like to share your announcements?
Absolutely. In addition to saying happy Thanksgiving to everybody, I have a few things on the, in your packet, the outstanding issues. Don't have any real update for today. There's some deadlines or some target dates coming up. The next meeting, we'll have a discussion about the housing stock inventory, the incentives that the council had given us some direction on at a previous work session. And then there are three items in your packet related to professional services agreements. This is really getting ready for all of our capital improvements for 2020. So, structural engineering, in case we have something that comes up of a structural nature over the course of the year. Also, general stormwater services and as well as site plan review services with, that have stormwater implications. Those are all in there for, in case we need them over the course of the year. And we've contracted with these companies. And anything under 75,000 but over 25,000, I'm required to report to council, so I'm providing you those reports this evening. And then lastly, in your packet, this is a handout that I think many council members saw from Mr. Van Gopple and the finance staff. It's this handout here that, how's my property tax dollars attributed? One of the pie charts there is the exact one that Mr. Van Gopple talked about earlier with respect to debt service. This is going to be included in the mailings associated with the tax bill so that people get this type of information, have that information available. Where do my tax dollars go? Because we collect the tax dollars, but the tax dollars go to multiple areas and we just want to let people know there's, we're more, there's more than one person to blame for this. It's, we all share the responsibility amongst all the governmental entities. We thought it was some pretty good information. And we did have that monthly city cost slide that the council seemed to like. We thought it would be good to share that with residents as well as where their dollars go for an average or a median-priced house of 150,000. Breaks down to 136 dollars a month, and we think you're getting a pretty good value for the money. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Miller.
Oh, thanks, Mayor. Russ, you know, I just, I wish we could show our citizens and our taxpayers the state squeezing the life out of us a little bit better with the lack of shared revenue, that chart, Russ, that you showed us, you know, where the declining shared revenue or the lack thereof from the state. I'd really like to see our taxpayers, or like to see them have that information. Is that possible in an economical way?
Yeah, I think we, we have that set up on the website right now. The piece that you have before you this evening is, again, as the city manager mentioned, going out with the tax bills, but it will still do some additional publication on the amount of shared revenue that we're collecting from the state.
Or, or lack thereof.
Or lack thereof, or frozenness.
All right. I just, I just really want our citizens to see how bad the state is screwing us. That's, that's what I want. So, I mean.
And then I, I did some changes to that, that one-page handout. I actually made it two pages so we can print it back-to-back. So, it's a little bit different than what's been sent out in the past, but wanted you to see it before it gets out to the residents.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. We'll now take a motion to adjourn. We'll now take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.